All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Is there any comment from the public or visitors? Hearing none, seeing none. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, June 16th at 7:00 PM. And we're going to have a special budget session workshop meeting on Thursday, June 4th this week at 4:00 PM. Everyone is welcome to attend. 2015 Discount Park Tickets are now available. They can be purchased through administrative offices. Father's Day Fishing Derby is June 21st, Rain or Shine at Peace Valley. Sailor's Point entrance to pre-register or for more information, doustownrec.com. Sounds of Summer Concert Series begins on Wednesday, June 24th at Central Park with 19 Tented Fruit Company. Start time is 7:00 PM and it is a free concert. The Doustown Township Golf Outing, which was scheduled for yesterday, was rescheduled due to the bad weather and we're going to now hold it on June 15th. You still need to register if you haven't. 8:00 AM registration at onsite and 9:00 AM shotgun start. That's June 15th, Monday, at Doustown Country Club. Okay, moving on to approval for the minutes of May 5th, 2015 regular meeting of the board.
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions, concerns, changes, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, correspondences.
Yes, I did make it in your packet, but I did email it out late on Friday. We received a letter from John Spear, President of Milestone Bank, soon to be Covenant Bank. They wish to sponsor the new benchel that's being constructed in Central Park. They have made a suggested $10,000 per year for the next five years. They would like, you know, something in writing, formal. My recommendation to the board at this point would be to take this matter under advisement, refer it to the solicitor for further review, and perhaps bring this back to you for consideration at your June 16th meeting, if that would be okay.
Consensus is we leave it and give it to our solicitor for a while?
Yeah, it sounds like, yeah. I mean, devil's in the details, of course, but I think we should pursue it.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Do you have any, were we going to recognize the, I'll say, long-term contributors without mentioning any name to the benchel, you know, like we did for Kids Castle, like the four-by-four?
Certainly, we could certainly, that would be, that would be, we have to work out all the details of, and future opportunities and.
We have to also look at our policy. We have a policy for naming. We have to pull that out, dust it off. Look at all, if anyone gave money over the last 20 years for that benchel, make sure that we, they weren't given any money, or weren't given money with any understanding that they would get any kind of recognition.
Yeah, we're not.
Okay. So, that's a non-issue, but we do have a naming policy. And then I also suggest to Stephanie that we have a relationship with other institutions and some institutions we've had a relationship with for a long time and they should also be investigated.
Agreed.
See if they have any idea of what they might want to do in this situation. Okay, so, we go on all that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Reports from the solicitor, we'll put him off for now because he's not talking to me right now. Chief?
Yeah, just two quick items. I'd like to discuss briefly some of the, I think it was Stephanie tweeted it and it also went out in the Google Groups regarding the thefts from vehicles and the break-ins around the township. They are continuing to occur and I need to reiterate that we need to lock our doors for all our vehicles and not only locking your car, but make sure you don't leave any valuables in because now we're starting to find out, people are locking their cars and they're trying to get forced entry into the vehicle. So, if they want to get in, they're going to get in. So, the best thing is to make sure your valuables are not left in the car. Second thing I'd like to get either the board's consensus or a vote is that I've been working with the Ways and Means Committee on the staffing needs of the police department. And as you all know, we've been shorthanded since January of this year and we anticipate being shorthanded a second officer in December. I'd like to get the board's approval to start moving forward with the hiring process to replace these officers. The Bucks County Chiefs of Police Consortium test was just this past Saturday, so the list will be coming out very shortly. And I'd like to have the opportunity to take the best available candidates and move forward that process.
I've been watching this for a while now and it's my recommendation as Director of Public Safety that we do move along with the hiring of at least one of these officers.
Well, I'll second that.
I agree. Okay, you got it.
All right, thank you.
I think that's a unanimous vote.
Yep.
If we need a vote on it. Thank you. Anything else, chief?
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Mario, anything?
Nothing.
Stephanie, you have anything?
Not at this time.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You look refreshed, was in Italy for her anniversary, so welcome back.
Thank you.
Supervisors, Ken, start with you.
Yeah, a couple of quick points. One, just to review one of the comments or the announcements you already mentioned and that was about the budget work session again, just trying to reinforce and those people who can attend, please come, but there's a lot of good work being done, a lot of information. So, I would encourage as many people to attend as possible. So, I think all the other supervisors will be here.
Yeah, that's what.
Okay, that's good.
I'm here.
Yep.
Mr. Tohill will not be here.
Mr. Tohill will not be here.
The, couple of other comments is really around EAC. One's on the native garden. The walk path has been completed and this was completed by an Eagle Scout project. So, that is done. So, now the committee will move forward with their plantings over the next month or so. You'll probably get that started, right? Right? Also, last year, there was an approval to construct additional pass within Central Park. And there are planned to be done this year. And what I would encourage us to do is when, before we start digging, that we work with the EAC on where those paths are going to go because what they detected recently were some patches of milkweed. It's up in the meadow here, which we haven't had for years. So, this is very important stuff for the monarch butterflies and other ground nesting stuff. So, I would hate to see those new paths go right through where the milkweed patches are. So, if we can move them side around it, somehow make this work and work with the EAC, that would be great.
Milkweed. Get that, that orange caution tape that we use.
I would just caution the board, we'll take a look at that request because it's been very difficult finishing up these trails and where they're located.
Well, all I'm asking for is to have the discussion. Let's just see what we can work out. Okay? The, the other two comments I have, one is, I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to see it, this is the May 21st Herald that came out and featured a story of Mr. Hendrick was in there about the Bluebird guy and all the terrific work he does. So, congratulations Ray for getting recognized for that. And also today.
And the township was duly noted.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's not just about Ray, it's about the, what the EAC does and what the township does.
That's all about you, Ray. That's all mine.
But the second award is to Ray and this was from the VIA Community Recognition Award that was held today. And Ray was there and he received a community service award. So, congratulations, Ray, and all your support and everything you do for us.
My opening remarks were, I said, I think I'm here under false pretenses because when Jane was alive, she never missed a designer house. And she'd try to drag me and I'd say, "I'm not going to any designer house." And they all looked at me and I said, "So, I got the award and I ate the lunch, so you can't get it back."
That's it.
Okay, good. Thanks. Brian, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is more of a question, Stephanie, with the golf tournament being postponed till next week, is there still an opportunity for foursomes to sign up?
Yes, there is still.
Okay. And tee signs as well are available and just a reminder that the money is being used for Kids Castle. For traffic, or, excuse me, TAB Committee, I'm encouraging everybody to go out and keep revisiting our TV station because the TAB Committee is doing a really good job of kind of revamping and making things more accessible, is not the right word, but what would you call it, Keith?
Attractive.
Attractive, that's a, but, but also programming. So, people actually know there's more of a schedule and a rhythm to what's happening. And we're really pushing on more content and gaining new pieces. So, you know, it's exciting to see what's going on behind the scenes. And then lastly, with Traffic Advisory Committee, there's six meetings left throughout the year and I'm having some scheduling conflicts with those Wednesday nights. So, I'm hoping that somebody on the board would perhaps fill in as the liaison for the remainder of the year, if there's anybody that would like to do that.
Three, two for one?
Two for one? No, no. I don't know if I'm doing two for one. I can look at, and the other thing to put out too is if anybody has a committee that meets in the morning during the day, I can certainly entertain doing that, but I'm not trying to take any away, but.
Unless someone else is.
When do you, when does the TAB meet?
It's Wednesdays.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Yeah.
At seven?
Seven, yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
And Ken, you're available to do that?
Yes, I'm available. I'll do it.
How many do you have now? Seven?
Twelve.
Twelve? All of them?
No, no.
Is there something that you want to do? You need a day?
I need a day and, and, you know, and.
Old people. The Friday morning thing.
That's something to think about.
Friday morning, Friday at one. Or no, 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 Mondays.
Yeah, they moved to Mondays.
It was first Monday, it was yesterday, first Monday at one in the afternoon at the Central Bucks Senior Center.
That's Sean's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I mean, I'll check, I said, I'll kind of, I can look at them and see if anybody's, you know, I'll look at the ones that I'm available for, maybe put an email out and see.
Do I have any more meetings now?
No, no.
See, that's the problem, most people force the mission in at night.
Sean's liaison to Bike Hike, which is morning and the senior task force, which is afternoon.
Yeah, and the Kids Castle's been meeting in the afternoons, yeah.
All right, so you, well, you got coverage for the.
Okay. Does that need to be a vote or is that just?
Yeah, let's vote on that.
Okay, so I'd like to nominate Ken to fill in as the liaison for the Traffic Advisory Committee for the remainder of 2015.
And I'll second.
Oh, I'll second that, yeah.
You second it. All in favor? Everyone votes yes.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, Brian. All right, Rick, do you have something?
Yes, I had three committee meetings. I would describe them maybe as robust, each one of them, which is another reason for the excitement ago in the committee meetings. The first one was the DTMA and we had a robust discussion, as I said, about what, where we're at. The DTMA feels that they would like to stay in existence. They don't think anything should be done with the water authority. But in order to get that, they realize that they have to grow it. So, to that end, they have gone on a, we got two initiatives going. They're going to start up the conversations again with Gresso as far as the well, the digging of the well, dedication of the well, piping, et cetera, et cetera. This not only would help them expand to that area, but would also solve the problem we have with the furlong residents, prior contamination. So, they're starting to work on that. And the other initiative they started on was in the Pebble Ridge section where we're anticipating possibly putting in sewers to see if there's a section or a portion that we can put in water that's economical and feasible and that the residents would want. So, that's going to take a little more groundwork. So, those are the two issues that they're working on to hopefully revitalize or get the DTMA heading in a more of a growth spurt. The Planning Commission, the, I call it the Wawa, Route 313 and Ferry Road came in again and they did another presentation, basically explaining that gasoline stations aren't as hazardous as some people were led to believe. They did that presentation and after resident comments, we, the Planning Commission recommended that the plan not be approved and sent them back to maybe come up with some better ideas. I think the intersection could use some work and I think that over time, maybe they can work something out to get something that will be amenable to everybody in that corner. Then I had the Sewer Committee and the easements went out and I don't know where it stands, maybe when Jeff gets here, he can update that, but there were 20 easements, they are out. And we're getting to the point where we're going to have to take the next step on the easements.
Maybe, still.
Depends on response.
Okay.
And then I slept.
Okay, good. Barkminster was this past Saturday and was very well attended. I think it was a lot of fun. I think it was very successful, Karen, you would agree?
Yes.
And that's a, that's a dog park event. It was really nice, beautiful day for it. Couple of us have been meeting with the staff, administration, and the architects over the last several months. And the last meeting we had, I don't know, two weeks ago, we came to the position where we're going to look at two options, either a renovation of the existing facility or a renovation plus, which would include renovating and then adding substantial, a substantial expansion, pretty much a new facility with expanding what we've got. For the next meeting of this board, we asked the architects to come back and present those two options to the rest of the board. This committee's going to make no recommendation, it's just that we kind of narrowed things down. And a lot of what will be presented is going to also hinge on our budget discussions because we have to look at cost of either renovations, minor expansion, and then a major expansion. So, there's a cost factor to both of them, but significantly, there's not a great difference in the cost of either one of them. So, it's really, it'll be interesting to see how it all pans out. But that conversation is inextricably linked to conversations with a budget because it's going to, we can't, you know, we can't afford an expansion without looking at to see what monies are coming in and what monies have to be generated. So, that's all going to be part and parcel of the next few months. By September, we hope to have, you know, pretty much in hand, part of what we're going to be doing after they make the presentation is seeing how the information gets out to the public about the options, including, as Stephanie, one recommendation Stephanie made, having actually in-house tours for the residents to see what we're, what we look like now, what we need, and get that out in the, out in the community. So, look for that discussion hopefully at our next meeting. They're going to have to, they're going to have to really move heaven and earth and sharpen all their pencils to get those preliminary plans, to sketch, get some plans to us with costs, sketch out cost outline for our next meeting in June. And that's all I have. Any questions on that? Did I fairly represent?
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting.
You weren't, yeah, I think you did. Did I think? Yeah. Next item on, no unfinished business?
We have.
New business, request to authorize amendments to the zoning and land development ordinances called cleanup.
Judy is here.
Yes.
Our Judy Stern-Goldstein from Reche and James, our township planner. And Judy will introduce what you have before you.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. What you have before you are three separate packets, if you will. The first one contains draft amendments to the zoning ordinance. They include some cleanup items. Sinclair, over the last, what, five years, has been keeping a little note of things that he notices as he's going through with issuing permits. Planning Commission has had some issues. We've noted some inconsistencies along the way. And then also some issues to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with current MPC requirements. One was the mineral extraction, changing our quarry section to mineral extraction to be consistent with the MPC, some cleanup issues like that. That has been sent to the Planning Commission, so we're not asking for any action for authorization for advertising by the board tonight on that at all. The Planning Commission's going to be chewing that for a while and looking to see if anything else needs to be added into that while they look at other cleanup issues. The second chunk is similar to that, it's the subdivision land development ordinance amendments. Again, it's cleanup issues and the Planning Commission is chewing on that. The third chunk is one that we, we'd like to discuss with you tonight and that's the basic code cleanup, the big blue book. And in that.
That's the one that starts with building construction and nuisances?
Yes.
Section 165.
Yeah, that basically takes out the building construction section of the code because now we have the general code.
UCC.
UCC. So, that takes out the old reference and you only have the new reference. It amends the nuisance section to deal with the barking dog issues and kennels.
I have a question on that one.
Yes.
Does it, does it say what size the property has to be to have barking restrictions? What if you have a 10-acre parcel and you've got a dog barking and no neighbors? Does this ordinance still apply?
That still applies. This one, the items one, two, and three in that are when it does not apply. So, if you're a kennel, you're a licensed kennel, you have at least 20 acres and the facilities are all 200 feet away from your nearest, from the property line, then it doesn't apply. 10 acres, five acres, they all apply. If you're not a licensed kennel, it all applies. Parks and Recreation, there's a number of items in Chapter 119 and they came through with a recommendation from Karen Sweeney. These are all cleanup items, a lot of them are small nuances that she's noticed over the years and she's very precise and these are to clean up those little loopholes and nuances. I think I characterized them correctly, right Karen?
That's a yes for the record? Thank you.
That takes you down to page four. Chapter 127, removing plumbing, same thing as removing the general construction because that's handled in the UCC now. Sewers, dealing with appeals. And that came right from, actually, who did that come, that come from Sinclair or did that come from Jeff, Stephanie? I forget who that one came from.
I think that came from Sinclair. Which one are you talking about, sewers?
Section.
136, yeah.
Yeah, section 24 and 25 on the draft. Stormwater management, it was clarifying water from individual residential car washing and/or it was just a grammatical correction. Streets and sidewalks section is defining bicycle path to be consistent with the definitions elsewhere in the code. And then 28 and 29 are the consistency items that only these items are changing, everything else is still in full force and effect.
I have any problems with any of that, I don't know if anybody else is.
Nope.
The only, the only problems I have is what you said with the first packet of information that you referred to, that's the zoning ordinance cleanup. And that has to do with the, I thought the, what's written here with the in-law suites is, is very confusing and very.
We're still trying. Contradictory. There were some different recommendations for consideration. We're still working through the in-law suites, group homes. We had some cleanup for definition of family and to meet HUD regulations. The group home issue was still out there. In-law suites comes into that also. And we're going to bring some of these back as philosophical questions for the board to let us know what you feel philosophically, because we can write the ordinance anyway, but some of these issues really come into how you treat multi, or multiple generations of families living together and are they really separate dwelling units or not and what constitutes that? And how to accommodate the changing nature of families and how people live together and what is a family.
Well, so all of these, whatever's written here is subject to discussion?
Everything is, in the zoning and SADO, it's.
I'll wait to hear from the Planning Commission then what they say.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's anything anyone wants to share with the Planning Commission, let us know and we'll, we'll take your thoughts.
What I'm going to tell, while you can share with them, I think all of page, all the whole consideration of.
The in-law suites.
In-law suite is contradictory and needs definition, especially when you talk about doing a restriction on deeds, who does that apply to and is it forever?
Yeah, and that was some of Sinclair's recommendations. My recommendation really is to not treat it as an in-law suite because that's an antiquated term and an antiquated concept really in our ever-changing family. So, I want to look at that philosophically before we get into deed restrictions and how you enforce it.
Yeah, I don't even know how you can enforce a deed restriction in perpetuity like that.
I'm.
So, anyway, those are the questions.
I'm with you on that one, Barb.
Item three, the blue book, includes the changes to the alarm, not the alarm, that's what I wanted to bring up.
We're still waiting for that from you.
Okay, so that will be part of it?
It will be part, it hasn't been put in yet because there was still some information on the alarm calls.
And it doesn't include the solicitors that we amended last year?
The one was already amended.
But is it in the blue book yet?
Yeah, it's already been included, filed in the blue book.
So, what are we waiting for there with alarm codes?
Our alarm code is, I think it's got to be 20 years old.
It's outdated.
It's like 42 pages long.
So, what are you waiting for regarding the alarm code?
Me.
What the chief would like to do with it.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not changing your alarm code, the chief will change it and I will, I will incorporate it for you.
That's all I needed to clarify.
If you wanted to authorize the advertisement of this, we can get that to Jeff, we can start putting it together and then, chief, what's your timetable on the alarm? Yeah, okay.
Working on it.
Working on it. Maybe we'll do that, we can do that separately or we can, if we can try to put it in.
I would like to get it done.
I'd like to put it in with everything and.
Frankly, I don't think any of these things are ready for advertising. No, I think, let's see what the Planning Commission does with.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, the stuff on the zoning and subdivision, I was just referring to the general stuff in the, the third item, she was referring to the general.
Just the general code cleanup, the, the general blue book stuff does not go before Planning Commission.
So, you're not requesting an authorization to advertise on any of these things?
Just the, just the one, the last one, which is the.
The one dealing with the building code.
Zoning and subdivision and we'll come back to you with, from the Planning Commission.
Let's make sure we get the right one, the one that starts with.
Building, the one starts with Chapter 65, building construction is the only one that's before you for a request for authorization tonight.
Okay, let me look at it again. All right. And this one I'm okay with. Is there a motion to authorize or to get, to authorize the Chapter 65, the ordinance or whatever, the blue book or amendments, whatever you want to call it? Can we call it the blue book amendments?
We can.
You can call it whatever you like.
Sent in today, June 2nd, 2015, blue book amendments.
I'll make a motion to the following, the previous of what you said.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize the advertisement of the June 2nd, 2015, blue book amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Ta-da. All right, next is 2015 tree pruning and/or takedown bid. Everyone had a chance to look through this?
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
The only question I had, I was surprised at the, the gap in the bids, that one is 48 and the other's 95. and the other's 95, or whatever it was.
48, 49, and then you had 105.
I'm concerned, is the 48 really that low, and are we getting a really good guy?
Oh, it's twice.
Well, Jimmy's was 49.
Right.
49 or 104.
Right.
Yeah.
The answer, I think, to the question is that both those low bidders have done work for us before, several times over, have done excellent work. The third bidder, I have not seen his tree work. He does do our grass cutting. I don't think it's a large enough gap to switch up for the work intended.
Okay, so you have history with the first two?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and you're satisfied with that history?
Yes.
That's fine.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, there's a motion to approve the tree pruning and takedown bid to be awarded to Davy Tree Company, or is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okey-dokey. All right, Bill's List of May 19, 2015, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the announcements, the Doylestown Township Golf Outing has been rescheduled to June 15th, Monday, June 15th, Doylestown Country Club, 8:00 AM registration, 9:00 AM shotgun start. As Ms. Mannion pointed out, we can still register more foursomes, and plenty of opportunities to continue to offer sponsorships. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors will meet next on June 16th at 7:00 PM. We're also meeting on June 4th at 4:00 PM for one of our budget session, work sessions. Everyone is encouraged to attend. The 2015 Discount Park Tickets are now available through our administrative offices. And Father's Day Fish and Derby is June 21st, it's Rain or Shine, Peace Valley Park at the Sailors Point entrance. Please pre-register or go to doilystownrec.com for more information. And the Sounds of Summer Concert Series kicks off on Wednesday, June 24th, at Central Park, 7:00 PM. The performance is offered by the 1910 Fruit Gun Company, which gave us the famous Simple Simon Says song. It's a free concert, and it's open to everybody. Anything else, Karen? I see you back there, you got everything? Does anyone have any other business? Hearing none, we're all adjourned, thank you very much. I give up. And there are documents to be signed. Karen, always done.